Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 18th City Council meeting of the City of Avalon. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, please guide the decisions that are before us this evening. May everyone join me in a moment of silence. We recently lost Bob Maestral, who was one of my longtime mentors, founder of Dive and Surf in Redondo Beach and the founder of Body Glove Wet Suits. He was a protector of the island and a major contributor to our ocean environment and the effects of the inactions of the conservants. Amen. Huh? I left two harbors out of that equation. Your work. Announcements Denise?
How about Roca?
I'm sorry, how about Roca?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Morrow?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponse?
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Oh, and I need to make an announcement.
Okay.
That this governing body will be holding two separate meetings this evening.
Three.
Three. Well, okay. They will not be paid any extra money for each one of those meetings.
Despite how hard we try, right? Okay. Do you have any other announcements Denise? Written communications? Council, any announcements or written communication?
Announcement later.
Announcement later. Okay, when we come back at six o'clock. Okay, Doug Federall.
My name is Doug Federall. I'm the captain of Avalon Sheriff's Station. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you two relatively new station volunteers. They're residents of Palmdale, although they've lived all over the world. They've been sheriff's department volunteers since 2000, so for the past 13 years. Past nine years, they've helped out at East LA Station, primarily working with one of our newer deputies, Mike Oriana. They've done things like set up nonprofit organizations and have done a lot with youth activities league programs. One of the primary things we're going to be using them for, and they've already been doing it, is on cruise ship Tuesdays, being down on Front Street with meeting the tourists that come over and doing what they can to help code enforcement and our deputies enforce some of the things on Front Street, like the golf carts and the bicycles and the pets and other Avalon municipal codes. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Danny and Donna Brooks.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and be of service to this community. My wife and I have traveled to Avalon many times and we would like to extend our services to the City of Avalon as well as to the Sheriff's Department. We've been volunteers for a long time and hopefully will be a volunteer or volunteers for a lot longer. So, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Welcome to Avalon. Excellent. Okay, our intentions, we have a few closed session items this evening. We're going to adjourn to closed session for as long as, well, until we can be back here at six o'clock so we can get to other business and then go back to closed session after that. So, as the agenda's published, do you want to announce any of the closed session items? Scott?
Yeah, we have three closed session items. Number one, public employee performance evaluation during the chief financial officer. We have conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation regarding the Falcon Road site. And then lastly, we have a practice of real property negotiators, 225 Methol Avalon. This is the property next to the museum, which we'll be discussing the price and terms of payment. That's it.
Okay. We'll try to see you back here as close to six as we can. So, wait a minute. Okay, we've returned from closed session. We handled one of our three closed session items. Would you care to report back, Scott?
No, we're not. We're blocking. I remember.
Okay. Our next item is a presentation from CRNR. Welcome David.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. David Ferrian, representing CRNR. I apologize, we had a glitch. We could not get our PowerPoint up. So, we're going old school. You should, in front of you, have a hand, a copy of it. So, want to real quick, you know, thank you for the time tonight. We're going to spend a couple minutes just talking about our transition and talk a little bit about our public education campaign. That'll be ongoing as we transition on July 1st. With me tonight is Maria Lazaric. She's our senior manager of our community relations department and George Lazaric, a vice president with our governmental affairs. And Cheryl Allison is with us tonight, currently with Republic but soon to be with CRNR. So, on the first page, I just want to spend a minute just talking about, there's another item on your agenda tonight where we're asking for the name of the company that we'll operate under to be Avalon Environmental Services. So, all of our signage that you're going to see around town will be, providing that items approved on the consent calendar will be under Avalon Environmental Services. So, this is our new logo. That's what you'll see running around town. Transition update, I'm going to do that part of the presentation. I'll be very brief and then Maria's going to spend a little bit of time talking about our public education campaign. As you know, we're scheduled for a July 1st transition. Wanted to update you on our trucks and equipment. All of that is in our yard in Stanton and being prepared as we speak. The majority of it is ready to go. It's been painted, it's been signed, and we'll be getting ready to ship that over to the island. So, and we're very pleased with the way that turned out. Our first shipment begins on Wednesday, the 26th. That's when the items, our first barge will be over here on the island. We have two scheduled. We anticipate we'll be able to get all the equipment on there, but in case we can't, we do have a third one reserved for Friday. Our equipment's going to be staged at the Field of Dreams. That's something we worked out with the city and the Catalina Island Company and so we'll have things staged there to allow for an easy transition. The commercial bin delivery, which is those businesses that have, you know, they don't provide their own containers, the larger containers, will be delivering our containers the weekend of the 29th and the 30th. And we're actually bringing a transition team over to handle that. All the employees have been offered employment with CRNR and we're finalizing some items relative to that. Our HR manager will be over here on Friday to finish that up. So, we anticipate having that all buttoned up and ready to go. And just want to report that our transition team, meaning those folks that don't currently work for the current company, we're bringing a team of people over starting next Wednesday, the 26th. So, we will have additional people on the island to ensure that we get a smooth transition, we get our containers delivery, and if any issues come up, we have people here to deal with them. And I'll be here a good majority of that time myself. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Maria and she's going to walk you through the public education piece.
Thank you David. Good evening, everyone. So, as David mentioned, our scheduled outreach will begin next week, June 25th. We intend to mail an announcement letter to all the residents and the businesses here in Avalon. We also intend to post that letter and I believe there's a copy of that for you. Post that on the mailbox, the post office bulletin board, excuse me. The letter's going to emphasize that we've been working diligently with seagull sanitation for a smooth transition process. The residents shouldn't feel any real major change other than different equipment, different colors, and Avalon Environmental Services. Website information will be included on that as well. They can go to our website and take a look at what their enhanced service options are available to them, bulk item collection, temporary service collection as well. We've also included a copy of the actual service guide. Again, I apologize, we had intended for this to be public so that everyone could view that and we had a little glitch tonight. We're also offering, as you're aware, an option for residents to subscribe to automated collection carts. They're hard carts with wheels and lids. We intend to mail a postcard with dimensions, information on that. If they opt to elect to subscribe to this, they can return it in a postage paid postcard with their information and we'll begin rolling those carts out August the 26th. Along with that cart, when we roll that out, we'll include additional information about recycling, information that'll be beneficial to them as well regarding Avalon Environmental Services. We believe that outreach is ongoing. You know, we intend to again work with Cheryl and Denise and be certain that you get the continued attention to all of the outreach and participation in community events that you've been used to and hopefully we'll surpass that as well. Any questions? Please feel free.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to come back up. I don't know if anyone has any questions, anything they'd like to go over a little more in detail, anything I can answer at this time.
Questions? Rudy, come on up.
I haven't seen any presentations, so if I'm asking redundant questions, just tell me to shut up.
Rudy Pilch, 346 Las Lomas.
One thing I'd like to know is, under this option, these are these rolling barrels and carts and so on, and I assume there must be some kind of a fee schedule to that?
Nope.
No fee schedule?
No.
Marvelous. Free is always good. Is there going to be any difference in the recycling process? I mean, I don't know, you've probably seen the spec list that we have now that identifies, you know, how to separate your refuse, the plastics and the metals and the bottles and...
You can keep that for your reference.
Okay, so this does do it.
There's a separate can, Rudy, for it. So, the blue bags, you put the blue bags inside the blue trash cans.
Will this be going out to the residents?
In the mail.
In the mail? This, the one that shows the different bins?
Well...
Okay. Because this shows you here what goes in the bins.
Yeah, I see. Okay, good. That's a good sign. Is there, are the fees going to be the same?
Yes.
Our residential fees?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
No?
Yes.
No, there's no change.
No change in fees?
There's no increase, Rudy.
No increase, yet. And then how about the annual, one time a year, they were doing a large item pickup?
Do you want to address that David? It's even better.
Is that even actually included here? It is included. Actually, what you'll be, what you're able to have now is what we call a bulky item collection. So, at the point you have something that doesn't fit in your containers, you'll be able to call the office and schedule that at your convenience and we'll send a truck out and pick it up. So, again, you won't have to wait for the annual cleanup. It'll be what we call a bulky item cleanup and it's on-call, on-demand. So, if you have something that, let's say your refrigerator goes out, you need to get rid of the refrigerator, you'll be able to call and we'll come and pick that up. So, you won't have to wait for the annual cleanup.
Now, is that no extra fee? The annual cleanup that we have now is at no cost.
This is no cost, up to three bulky items per year? Anything after that would be, there'd be a charge for that, but...
Okay. Okay, thank you. I think that's the only question I have.
Anything else?
Anyone else have a question?
Okay, well, thank you David.
Thank you and I apologize for the technical difficulties. That's okay.
We live on an island.
We live on an island, we're used to it.
And Richard doesn't mind.
But now...
Audra, remember we were waiting till we came back from closed session?
Yeah, we got a closed session.
Because you said it wouldn't be a problem because she was spending the night.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was told that I'm good.
Okay.
Sorry Karen.
I spoke too soon.
All right, we have two more items, two more closed session items that we're going now
to depart. We can get CRNR and their gang back on the ferry. And what do you anticipate our time being there Scott?
Twenty-five minutes to 35 minutes, somewhere, so a half hour. I checked back.
Okay, so if we're late, it's his fault. Okay, we've returned from closed session for our two remaining closed session items. Would you care to report back Scott?
Number four, blocking of taking a closed session.
Okay, on to our second presentation this evening. Audra?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce Karen McBride, who is from RCAC. The past few council meetings, we've been talking a lot about grants and trying to get a disadvantaged community designation to assist with our matches and other important things. And Karen is a resource that we're hoping to tap into. In fact, she's already kind of been helping us out. So, Karen McBride.
Okay.
Hi Karen.
Hi there. Story of my life here. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight and also the opportunity to come to Avalon. I travel a lot for rural communities and they're not as, of course, as beautiful as Alon, but that's a whole nother story. So, we'll go ahead and move forward. I have a brief presentation. Rural Community Assistance Corporation, we commonly refer to as RCAC. RCAC is a part of a national nonprofit organization. The bigger partnership, of course, is the Rural Community Assistance Partnership, six regions. RCAC represents the western region, which we actually provide technical assistance and training in 14 western states. We recently picked up Montana and North and South Dakota. So, again, we do a lot of travel, again, not to communities as beautiful as Avalon. Some of our programs include affordable housing. We have two divisions at RCAC, one environmental and one housing division. We provide affordable housing, the technical assistance under our HUD grants. We also work with communities and developing community facilities. That's more along the line of community development block grants and working with communities that might need a fire station or some type of a community improvement building. Water course and wastewater infrastructure, why we're here tonight, talk a little bit about the wastewater infrastructure. We do have a loan fund program. A lot of times, we provide a bridge loan to communities to help them get started on their project. And if the community, of course, has been awarded by a federal or a state contract or grant, then we get the repayment from them. So, usually the bridge loan gets you started. We can turn bridge loans around in about seven days and get that to the community. We provide a whole array of classroom and online training. A lot of our classroom and online training are geared towards maybe empowering boards in small communities and getting them educated on boards' do's and don'ts and giving them a lot of education on how to conduct board built business. We do a lot of water and wastewater classroom and training also to get water operators the education to continue on in getting a higher certification, the same with wastewater. So, a lot of the online training, of course, is very popular to communities that can't travel in or don't have a budget to travel in and actually attend a classroom training. Technical assistance is pretty much commonly what I provide. I have a wastewater background. A lot of times, technical assistance disranges from going in and working with communities to find solutions for their water and wastewater problems. Maybe the TA involves finding them funding, maybe it's actually working with an operator, maybe it's actually reviewing rates and giving our opinion if the rates need to be adjusted to, to take care of operation and maintenance or reserve fund accounts. Like I mentioned earlier, board training. So, technical assistance is just pretty much short of engineering services. We don't provide any engineering services, but we do have several engineers that we have employed as well as water operators and wastewater operators. And of course, again, what we want to talk a little bit about tonight is conducting median household income surveys, which we refer to as MHIs. And I wanted to back up a minute before I go over what's been done so far. RCAC and part of the national partnership is, our funding is from federal and state grants and contracts. RCAC being the biggest region of the six, we have about 110 private contributors also. So, we have a very good funding source that we're able to provide a lot of these services to communities. So, what have we done so far is we've met with Audra and we've discussed Avalon's needs in the wastewater infrastructure and making the improvements there. We've also contacted, I contacted USDA Rural Development and also State Water Resources Control Board to let them know that we've been asked by the community of Avalon to have some help in trying to determine what we can find in funding to make these improvements. We've evaluated also with Audra, but also with the funders, what the current median household income is. And I'm sure Audra has shared with you that everybody has different numbers. So, we're trying to determine, you know, how USDA came up with their set of numbers and of course, the data they use. And then, of course, the state water board and the numbers that they've come up with, unfortunately, positions Avalon to be about $208 shy of being classified as a disadvantaged community. And then, of course, disadvantaged community is nothing more than just kind of a low income area under a statewide median income. So, what we're focusing on next, of course, is to continue to assist Avalon and through the process and try to come up with a Plan B, since we're still, again, that $208 short. But also, when we did contact USDA Rural Development, according to their census data, Avalon is already disadvantaged for their program. So, they came back and said that their criteria, their income status is anything below $50,000 and they've encouraged Avalon to move forward with conducting a pre-application. So, I can work with Audra on that and support Avalon in any way I can to pull that information together for the pre-app application. Usually, when Rural Development gets the pre-app and we really, RCAC does their best in really working with the funder and encourage them to entertain the community to go to a full application. So, we'll work on the pre-app, hopefully get that over the hump and have them invite us to conduct the full application process. We'll continue discussions for eligibility with the state water board. I was talking to Audra earlier and, of course, it's, again, a shame that we're only off by $208 for their program, but we got an email late last night on how they came up with the data. So, I'd like to actually contact them when they get back to Sacramento and kind of sit down with them and kind of review what mythology they went through to determine. We're still off by that amount. And then, we're still, of course, have the option of conducting a community-wide income survey. It's a process by mail that we send out usually a notification letter to all the customers and let them know why the need is to conduct an income survey and if grant funding does come through, how that funding would be utilized to improve the wastewater system. So, we're still exploring that. Again, the mailing happens twice. We usually mail a survey, wait for a number of responses and then do an additional second mailing and hopefully meet our target based on the mailing. If we don't meet our target response needed for, after the mailing to determine the MHI, then we actually come out and finish it door-to-door. So, again, supporting us with Avalon with funding applications, any income surveys and then anything that we can do, again, to support you on rate review or rate adjustments. And I don't want to put rate adjustments in there and alarm anybody. It's just, again, part of the process of how we can kind of support you if we need to look at rates again. But I understand you're going through that process now. So, any questions at this time, kind of where we're at?
I have one. As the data is compiled for the income survey, in that process, do you also look at cost of living adjustments based on what it costs to live in this community versus another one? Is that part of the analysis at all?
It is not, and that's a good question. And that's actually something that we asked the water board to consider, kind of a margin of error, you know, where the community's located. And again, that, I guess, didn't change numbers in their eyes, but the survey itself is pretty simple. Number of folks in the household, what was the reported annual income of prior year. And then, they actually have to print their name and sign the form. That information is collected by us. We do the mailing. We collect it and we don't share any household or individual information with even the funders. We just come back and say Avalon came in at $49,000 or whatever the MHI comes in at.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to let you know that all the help today has been free from RCAC, which is amazing to get these kind of resources and advocacy for nothing. So, I'm very appreciative for Karen. If we do have to do the MHI, they'll come back with a proposal on what that costs. But I believe that a lot of the other stuff in there is just...
Good work.
Yeah. And so, I think that's really important to know, that they've already started working for us and we haven't had to pay them anything, which is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Audra's made it very easy to work with you. She's given me a lot of good information.
Excellent. Well, thank you Karen for the presentation. Anyone in the audience have any questions for Karen? Yeah, Rudy, come on up.
Rudy, be gentle.
That Karen's pretty smart.
Very observant.
Just one simple question. I just wondered, does this all just only apply to capital improvement projects for the city or, I mean, grants? You're focusing on grants.
We are focusing on grants. That's correct. The particular, this project would just be infrastructure. So, no drinking water improvements, if it's getting a treatment plant built, any construction replacement, so...
Very good. Thank you. Yes, that's a good answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you Rudy. Thank you, Rudy. Moral Communications. Anyone in the audience have anything on their mind they'd like to discuss with council that is not on our agenda?
ADR.
Not seeing anyone come forward. We'll give ADR a second to...
So, Jen doesn't kill me. I have a couple of announcements I want to make early in the evening, so we still have our audience. Thursday begins our week-long celebration of the Centennial of Avalon. And Thursday night, the kickoff's going to be a Centennial Fest on Crescent. Food, games, historical displays, and music between 5:00 and 9:00. Friday, and don't panic, the fish fry is back, but this time it's going to be fish from the market. Actually, US Foods is donating the fish, the corn on the cob, the coleslaw, plates, napkins, spoons, onion, or not onions, lemons, everything. And so, that's going to be free. It's going to be limited to the first 500 people that show up because we have food for 500. And it's on Crescent Avenue between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. Then on Saturday, we're going to have a street concert on Wrigley Stage. I don't have any other information as to who's going to be playing, and that's between 8:00 and 10:00. On Sunday, June 23rd, 8:30 to 10:30, Catalina Movies on the Beach in front of the Pavilion?
South Beach, I think.
South Beach, yeah. In South Beach. Monday, we have Pack a Picnic Night at the Joe Machado Ball Field from 5:00 to 10:00. It's kind of an old countrywide picnic where they go up there and have three-legged races and sack races and stuff like that. So, that could be kind of fun. Tuesday night, June 25th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at Wrigley Stage, we're going to have local band nights. We're going to have three or four of our local bands perform, which will be really cool. And the culmination is next Wednesday, the 26th, from 6:00 to 9:00. Actually, it's about 6:00 to 9:20. On Crescent Avenue, we're bringing a barbecue onto the main street between Pier and Wrigley Plaza. We can feed about 600 people there. There'll be hot dogs, burgers, chili, coleslaw, I think. And we're going to have a centennial cake. And then, it's going to culminate at 9:00 with a fireworks show. It's going to be that Wednesday, so that'll be kind of fun. So, come celebrate Avalon's birthday. And then, one other thing is British Soccer Camp is going to be in Avalon, June 24th to June 28th. It's for kids 3 to 16. And signups are extended through this Monday. You can sign up at City Hall or you can go online at cityofavalon.com and download the application. It sounds like a really cool thing. They did it last year and it was a really well-attended camp. So, Jen, don't kill me.
Excellent. Thank you, Ollie.
My pleasure.
Consent calendar, Denise.
We have seven items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is actions from the June 4th, 2013 City Council meeting. Second one is expenditures. We have warrants in the amount of $715,023 payroll in the amount of $186,040. For a total expenditure amount of $901,063. We have a resolution before you for a used oil recycling grant. And this is before you, I believe, every year, Brian, or every three years?
It's been like every four years, but not this one will be indefinite until it's canceled.
Right. And then, we received, the planning department received a letter from the California Coastal Commission asking us to adopt a resolution in support of increased funding for local coastal planning. There is a First Amendment already to the franchise agreement, franchise and lease agreement with CRNR, which we entered into in March of this year. And there's two things on it. And one is for them to be able to use the name Avalon Environmental Services as well as for the city to receive a franchise fee equal to 10%, correct Scott? For charges that are not, that they don't normally, we don't charge normally and they would be receiving the money. The sixth item is a renewal of a service contract with Pacific Alliance, which is Lori Montgomery. And she maintains an integrated database for us for direct assessment of tax bills as well as parcel data that she's always trying to keep current, which is a challenge. And then, once a year, she updates our vehicle permit program at City Hall, which helps us keep everybody hopefully in line. And then, also, she does stuff on the website as well as handles customer service. And then, also, the Voting Delegate and Alternates for the League of California Cities, which is in September in Sacramento. Currently, we have three council members that will be attending that. Mayor Pro Tem Michael Ponce, Councilmember Ole Olson, and Councilmember Ralph Morrow. So, we're asking for you to appoint Mayor Pro Tem as the Voting Delegate and Ralph and Ole as the Alternates.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. There's seven items on our consent calendar. Anyone in the audience care to discuss any of the seven items that are here before us? Counsel?
Rudy.
Rudy, come on up.
Rudy Phillips, 346 Las Lomas. Would like to hear a little bit more about the fire truck before you take an action.
That's on general business.
That's our next one.
That's our next one.
Yeah, item eight.
Yeah.
Isn't that on the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome, Rudy.
I have two questions of staff regarding the consent calendar. First, I know that Lori's been doing this Pacific Alliance contract for some time. Has staff taken the time and identified anything that we need to improve or change in that process to make it more effective? Have we gone through that process at all?
Do you have recommendations, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Do you have recommendations?
No, just identifying, you know, at one point in time, when Charlie was here, he was trying to correlate this with the database and try to keep it with planning and have some of this stuff kind of be...
We are working on more communication between all the departments and Lori. If, I'm not sure what you're exactly asking.
I haven't personally identified it, but we've been doing this long enough that we've found some strengths within this process and we've probably identified some weaknesses. As long as we can identify with this agreement with her, the weaknesses that we have determined and address them, that would be my suggestion, if there has been any. On the support of the Coastal Commission request for additional funding, through this recommendation, have they encouraged Sacramento any funding stream for this process or they're just asking for more money and more support? Has there been any drafted language as to where the governor's going to get this money or is his design and resolve going to be increasing taxes or fees to the end user, the cities and/or taxpayers?
Asking for the legislature to increase the funding for the Coastal Commission as when the community and Coastal Commission is having more vigorously enforcing and requiring the cities to update their local coastal programs. So, they're asking the legislature to give them more money. What I anticipate this is about is that the budget that was just passed, it will be signed within the next eight days or so, is based on a very conservative estimate in terms of revenues coming in. And that if the economy continues as it is, there will be another couple billion dollars to be distributed. And I think the Coastal Commission wants this, additional money for it to be distributed.
So, the Coastal Commission and/or its lobbyists is not forecasting where this money's going to come from. Just give me more money.
Yeah. Okay. There's another one, too. This number four, this is a good example of how they get you, okay? Because if we say no, we go on that list and the Coastal Commission staff remembers Avalon the next time we come in, right?
Roger that.
Yeah.
Okay. Of the seven items on consent, anyone else on the council have any discussions of the seven items? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on the consent calendar?
Move staff on one to seven.
I second.
Okay. Call for a vote, please.
Ralph, did you vote, Ralph?
Yeah.
All ayes.
Okay. General business.
This item is the Avalon Fire Department has a fire engine that's being replaced soon. And I'll let Mike Krug come up and talk about it briefly.
Mike Krug, Avalon Fire Department, 420 Avalon Canyon Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. The issue before you tonight is twofold. Number one, declare the Avalon Fire Department 1999 Ford Type 5 engine, engine one surplus. And second, choose a final destination for it when it's removed from service, which I expect to be around July 15th. My recommendation is that the vehicle should leave the City of Avalon inventory and leave the island completely to avoid any further maintenance issues, costs, and/or associated storage issues. I've given council several options. The first one being to continue to try and sell the vehicle. It has been listed with a fire apparatus dealer for over a month with no interested parties. There's also an option to donate the vehicle to a mainland charity. That sells the vehicle, then that charity that's designated receives the money. The vehicle has also been submitted to the California State Firefighters Association Surplus Equipment Program with no requests received. There's also an option to donate it to the Bombaros Organization, and that's an organization that collects surplus equipment for firefighters in Mexico. They have also responded, or they have responded back with an interest in receiving the vehicle. And then, lastly, there's an option to donate the vehicle to the Hawaii County Fire Department Station 17A in Lapa Hoi Hoi, Hawaii. And you should have an attached letter with your packet. That letter is from Fire Chief Wayne Krug, which coincidentally is my father. He is the Volunteer Division Fire Chief from Hawaii County. That being said, I'm obviously familiar with their department's needs and that's why I'm presenting you with several options tonight. I don't want to, I want to avoid any possible conflicts or any accusations with regards to nepotism. I'd be happy to answer any questions in more detail about any of these options if you like. And I think Rudy has some questions as well.
So, if they don't get it, you get disinherited?
I want it to go away. If Hawaii County can use it, or someone else for that matter, I'd love to see someone get some use out of it before it's finally retired completely.
Looks like nobody wants it.
Hawaii wants it.
And Mexico wants it.
The, one of the reasons, or several of the reasons, that Hawaii County is interested in it is the particular station that they'd like to earmark it for is very rural. And while they do have several engines there, one of the challenges they have are dirt roads and bridges that their current engines exceed the weight limit. So, if the vehicle was to go to them, one of the things it could do for them is allow them, an engine that could go across some of the bridges in their district without exceeding the maximum capacity of that bridge, which is obviously important.
Rudy, you have a question on that item?
Mike, what's the estimated value of the unit?
I can tell you that the company that, called Brindle Mountain, that listed the vehicle, estimated it at $25,000. That estimate seemed very high to me, given the condition of the vehicle. And with that being said, we haven't received a single offer at that amount or anything less than that. So, my wishy-washy answer is the value of the vehicle is whatever somebody wants to pay for it. And up to this point, we haven't had any interested parties.
But maybe somewhere in that $20,000, $25,000.
Potentially.
I guess where I'm going with this comment is the fact that obviously, you're looking at a budget. Now, you're looking about, our next subject is going to be rate increases that are going to be added. And if there is that kind of value, it seems to me it ought to stay with the community somehow. And I'll just give you a little testimony. About five years ago, I did go through a vehicle donation process with one of these organizations that takes it. They market it, they sell it. And then, the proceeds go to whatever designated organization that you want, nonprofit. And it worked very well. It was, I was impressed with it because it was very easy just to ship the vehicle over. They picked it up, they housed it, they advertised it, and finally sold it. And then, the nonprofit received the funds. So, anyhow, I think either the city needs to recapture that value, seems to me, or we do have some nonprofit organizations in Avalon that need extra funds and they need it desperately. One of them particularly that I've been doing a little time with is the Choises. But they're just, they're just one of several. I know they're all hurting for money. But I would like to suggest that that value stay in Avalon.
Thank you, Rudy.
Rudy, you took my papers.
Rudy's slick. Rudy's still slick.
Keep an eye on your paycheck, Mike.
Mike, it has been listed for sale?
Pardon me?
The truck has been listed for sale?
Yes, and it's currently still listed.
And we have no offers?
Not so far. And the company that I listed it with, I actually got, was recommended to me by the people that are building our current vehicle. And they have a vested interest in seeing it sell. They take 7% or $500, whichever is higher. So, obviously, they're car salesmen and they have a vested interest in seeing it sell at whatever value somebody's willing to pay for it, so they can recoup their money. So, we didn't pay anything upfront to list it and have it listed on their website. So, they do have a vested interest in seeing it sell. And then, I just wanted to kind of touch on some of the comments that Rudy made. Regardless of what happens to the vehicle, whether it stays here or somebody wants to put time and money into refurbishing it, that's all well and good. But here, it comes back again full circle, just like we talked about almost a year ago, about when we were talking about replacing this engine. How much time and money does the city want to invest in a used
We've invested a lot in that truck over the years.
And it's served the department well.
Right.
It's in service every single day. It gets a lot of use.
Yep.
Because of its size, it has a lot of value and that's why it's on every call.
It needs to go.
Any other discussion or recommendations?
Maybe go to the charities and find out if somebody wants to take a shot at it. You know, say, raffle it off or whatever. And then, if all else fails, send it to Hawaii.
The little bit of research I did about the charity organizations is essentially, you pick which charity you want to support, you ship them the vehicle, then they in turn turn around and sell it. And I'm not sure if they sell it for scrap. They try to sell it, would try to sell it as a fire engine hole, part it out. But ultimately, it comes, it becomes their problem, whatever they want to do with it, however they want to get the most money from it.
So, how much use is left in that vehicle? What do you think?
Not much. Well, not much for us. I think one of the things that, that an organization like the Bombaros or Hawaii County can get out of it is that it's not going to be in service every single day. That it'll become kind of a specialized piece of equipment. And both organizations have a mechanic fleet, can invest some money and time in it, make it, try to prolong its life a little bit and then use it sparingly. I think whether it was kept in service here or kept in service somewhere else, its days are numbered, certainly.
It's, yeah. It's ran its course here, I feel. It's an old vehicle.
And it's retired to Hawaii.
I'd like to see it go to Hawaii personally, myself. I think it might have a few good years doing it. And if somebody could use it over there and make it work properly and make it good use for firefighting. Is that a motion? I would just say, I'm just saying that if they could get any use out of it, a little more life out of it, I'd love to see it go there tonight.
If that's the motion, I'll second.
I would like to make a motion that we ship it up, off to Hawaii.
And the shipping's going to be covered by the receiving party?
It will. They have some sort of organization similar to some of the relationships we have with the freight line, that they have with the container people that ship stuff back and forth. So, I have a letter, the letter you have spells out that they understand that any shipping costs to Hawaii are absorbed by them, that once it leaves the island... that once it leaves the island, it's, it's theirs.
Is this on the Big Island?
Pardon me?
Is it going to the Big Island?
It is. It's going to the Big Island. If you're familiar with the Big Island, it's on the east coast of the Big Island, about 30 minutes outside of Hilo. And it's a little town called Lapa Ho'ohi that's very rural.
Should go visit it.
I'd like to go. Ship it to Hawaii.
You'll have to go visit your old truck.
Okay, is that a motion and a second?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
Aloha.
Mahalo.
Okay, why don't we move to the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting?
Roll call, Denise?
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Morrow?
Here.
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
And Chairman Ponse?
Here. Announcements? None? Written communications? Denise, any written?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No presentations? Oral commu, amoral? Oral communications? Anyone wishing to speak in regards to the hospital on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing no mass run to the microphone? Consent calendar?
We have three items on the consent calendar. The first one is actions from the March 19th, 2013 Hospital Board Meeting. We have on the Chief Financial Officers Report, financial statements for February, March, and April. And then there was a letter from John Freel, the CEO of the hospital, just updating or giving you information on the sewer replacement project, and recommendation is just to receive and file the documents.
Anyone care to pull anything or discuss anything on the consent calendar?
I was just looking at the cost, the ballpark figure for the sewer replacement on that. Is, Dennis? Are you familiar with any of that? With the replacement sewer for the hospital? I, I just was looking at, at the estimated ballpark figure of the cost to fix that was what?
600, 7,000?
Is that?
I just reviewed it.
Did you?
30 minutes before the council meeting. I haven't gotten into it, but I did see the price.
But does that price seem a little higher, or is that?
It does, does to me, but I, I need to review it to be sure.
I was just thinking of, I didn't know if there was anything from the city's part of it that we could figure out what we could use or what we might need or... I know the inspections are done by state people from, that do hospitals, so our inspector really could only do so much, right? His hands are tied.
That's correct. It's specialized.
It's a whole, it's a whole different animal.
Yeah, it's a whole different.
That you have to get approvals for.
Sure. That means, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Rich? But I, I thought it was high, too.
Well, Rich, I kind of agree with your sentiment. I mean, we entered into a sliplining project where we sliplined, you know, two-thirds of the flats for a million and a half dollars. And here we are talking about one building for 600 grand, so...
But I, the other issue on this is that they actually have to break through the floors.
Yeah, I understand that.
They're going through cement.
Right.
So it, it's not like going out and digging up the street. They're actually...
I think it needs to be done. There's no doubt about it. I mean, I, I agree with it, but, but just in the wording of it, it was just a ballpark figure. So it wasn't, nothing in, nothing in concrete.
An auspice can add so much cost to it.
Can I get a motion then on the consent calendar?
So moved, one to three.
Second.
Call for a vote?
All eyes.
General business?
There are three positions that are going to expire at the end of June of this year, and we put an ad out in the paper as properly noticed. The hospital board has made a recommendation of three applicants, Conrad Ovega, Lisa Moss, and Beatrice Van Everie.
Open for discussion, anyone?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the three applicants. Point Conrad Ovega, Lisa Moss, and Beatrice.
Second.
Call for a vote? Oh, any discussion in the audience?
Who was my second? I'm sorry.
Ralph.
Call for a vote?
All eyes.
Chair's report? I have nothing. Members' report? Ben, we're adjourned?
Okay, I'll call the city council meeting back to order. Public hearing.
Do you want to do the other public hearing first, the one on our special one? I'm sorry? Oh.
And I no longer have an agenda sitting in front of me for the special meeting, so let's call the sp- Okay, we'll call the special meeting to order. It's a public hearing item regarding mooring fees and proposed increases. And you want to review staff's recommendation on this?
I'm sorry. Busy thinking, am I not? I'd try to have Brian Bray come up and talk.
From, from memory, I believe that our intention was to open the public hearing and hold this item over for staff to do further review. Is that correct? No? Isn't that what we discussed in closed session?
No.
Okay. All right, Scott, lead us through it.
Come on, guys. This is improperly noticed and intended for consideration of adjusting these upwards in the harbor. They will provide the details. If the council were to approve this, the Orbis book code requires that you also prove that you approved it twice at another meeting. So this would be denied in order. Here, the Orbis book code imposes two hearings before you increase any fees will be adjusted at the next year, if required to stay long. But tonight will be the first of two public hearings on the fee increase because these fees are not property, property related fees. In other words, you have to choose to go to the harbor and, and moor there. It requires three months. The ones later tonight, because of property related fees, require four months. For these fees, it's three months to approve.
Good evening. Last time mooring fees were raised were in July of 2011, two years ago. I'm recommending a 5% increase across the board, except for a new category. Right now, we have anything 39 feet and under. So a boat that's 39 foot is paying for the same thing that the guy on the 30-foot mooring is paying for. And I'm proposing to go to a, a new category of 31 to 39 feet, which fits on the 40-foot mooring. They would be paying a little bit extra, other than the, what the 30-foot boat pays now and what they pay now. Just to note that our fees are up to 36% less than what you pay at the Isthmus. Currently, a boat 30 and under at the Isthmus pays $31, we're 28. I'm proposing 29. 31 to 39 feet, Avalon currently pays 28. The Isthmus pays 38, and I'm proposing 32. And then the rest of them are just all 5% increases. Same with the shoulder rates. We have a winter rate where you pay for any two nights and you get five nights free. We'll continue that. And we have a shoulder rate, which is off-season from when the winter rate ends until June 15th, where you pay specific Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I'm proposing that we drop that and just have pay any four nights and get three free. And with the mooring owners and leases, we're also proposing a 5% increase on, on those fees also.
Thank you, Brian. This is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience care to comment on this item? Rudy?
Good boy, Rudy.
Rudy Phillips, 346 Las Vilmas. I hadn't really intended on addressing the harbor fees, but I think that one thing that the city always has to remember when there's a comparison done between Avalon fees and Isthmus fees is that they pay a lot more fees for the use of their harbor than the city does. And that's why there is a disparity between the two. Are you all aware that they do pay tidelands fees? To the state of California? Does the city? No, the city owns their own tidelands. Anyhow, I'm just, I just would like to caution that because I think every time we hear about rate increases, there's a comparison to the Isthmus, and they're not com, they're not comparable.
Thank you, Rudy.
So Rudy, you were the harbor master of the Isthmus, right?
I was.
Yes.
Many, many years ago.
Yeah. So you would know.
I, I merely remember what, I mean, even since my city council time. And also, as the boat owner, spent quite a few times addressing the, the harbor rates. And I think there's still needs to be caution about that. They're, they're a very good part of the community, and...
Yes, they are.
We obviously have to provide something for them easily as we, as we do take.
Okay, thank you, Rudy. Anyone else in the audience care to comment? Discussion, council?
I have a question for Brian.
Okay, you have a question for Brian?
Brian, yes. At Two Harbors, if you come in in a 30-foot boat, all that's left is a 50-foot mooring. You can get that mooring for the price of the 50-foot mooring. Do we do that in Avalon?
No, we charge by the boat size, not by the mooring size.
I, I know that was a benefit to Two Harbors when they changed that policy a few years ago.
Well, I think it would be kind of tough if the guy comes in and pays for two nights on that 50-foot mooring, and we need that 50-foot mooring the next day to give to another boat that's bigger, and we have to move him back to a 30-foot mooring, and then we'd have to refund him. And I think there'd be people saying, well, you're putting me on a bigger mooring because you want more money out of me.
No, you're putting on a bigger mooring because he wants the bigger mooring. It's the choice of the boat owner. That's something to think about. And I, I also know that in Two Harbors, the mooring fees include the maintenance of the mooring, and in Avalon, it doesn't.
Now, that's on the mooring lease.
On leases, but that's, that's figured into the daily rates, too.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Anyone else have a question for Brian while he's up? Any other discussion?
No?
Anyone care to entertain a motion then on this item?
Did you close the public hearing?
We'll close the public hearing. Anyone care to entertain a motion on this item?
Lou, staff?
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote, please.
What was that?
Four eyes, Kennedy, Ponse, Hernandez, Olson, one no, council member Morrow.
Okay, we'll close the special meeting and go back to the public hearing item of the regular council agenda.
This is the public hearing for the saltwater and sewer rates to be increased. This is the second, we're going to break this down into two sections. So we're going to open and continue the public hearing. And then if, to receive public comment and to acknowledge if we've had any written letters in protest, and we have received four, and one, one for it. We would have to, just for the record, written protests would have to be 51%. And of the sewer customers, we would need to receive 621 letters of protest. Saltwater, we would need 523 letters of protest. So we're, it is for a 10% increase in the sewer rates. And yearly, that is $43.27 added to, this is for residential information, added to the property tax bill, which is $3.61 a month. For a saltwater, it's a 15% increase, and that is a total of $18.61 for the year, which is $1.55 a month on the property tax. If you were to vote on this, and we receive a four-fifths vote, then it would, the ordinance would pass. If you do adopt the ordinance, we would go to the second phase, which is opening another public hearing, and it is regarding the, the report. Are you, are you winking at me, Scott?
Right, there are, there are, there are two items. The first is, at the last meeting of the city council, you introduce in a way of reading of the ordinance that would set what the fees are. When you've done that, to make the fees effective, you have to adopt the ordinance. After you do that, then there's a separate action. And that separate action is to place the collection of these fees on the cash flow. So there's two actions versus two.
That's what I said.
Right.
In a long sort of way, it sounds like yes.
Yes would have been good.
You know, it'd be better if you guys sat together. You could beat each other up.
No, we're better this way.
Okay, this is public hearing item. The public hearing is open. Anyone care to comment on the saltwater and sewer proposed rate increases?
It's time, Rudy.
Rudy Phillips, 346 Las Vilmas. I think the focus of my statement is that prior to the city council taking actions to add any fees to the additional fees to be passed to the, be passed on to the community, that I feel that the city really needs a full disclosure on the current budget discussions. And I think what's happened here is that the budget, I, I, I understand that the budget is in process and that what, there's going to be a final hearing, a final meeting regarding the status of the budget on next week. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think what the city needs to do, or at least what I would encourage them to do, is that before they decide that they have to increase fees, that they need to scrutinize the budget very carefully, which I'm sure you've done already, but I think there's a need for additional scrutiny. And there's some good precedents for that. Because I do understand that, say, the council, you're, you're in a budget crunch right now just because you've lost a lot of revenue as it relates to the ACIA. And, but I think there's a, there's a precedence here that actually occurred many years ago that might cause you to think maybe a second time about that. And that was in 1981. We had a crisis on the city council. I mean, in the city, not just on the city council, but it caused a crisis on the city council. But it had to do with a, the fact that the city lost a significant amount of budget money as a result of Prop 13. And at that time, I think we lost, it must have been upwards of about 40%, maybe close to 50% of the revenue. And so that was very critical. We had just passed a budget, and when that was finally declared, and the... Even at that time, anyhow, they're, they're facing, you're, you're facing the same critical decision that has been made, that was made back in that time. But the council at that time, we had a very strong mayor, very strong mayor, very fair mayor, somebody that I think needs a lot of credit, even in today's centennial, in the current centennial. in the current centennial. Bud Smith was the mayor at that time. And this is Denise's dad. And he was a marvelous guy. He made some great contributions to the city of Avalon. But anyhow, to kind of further set that centennial stage, all of the activity that took place at that time did not take place in a magnificent stadium like you have now. It was the old city hall. And Richard, I think, remembers the fire station in that old city hall too. And then the other person that was involved at that time was Charlie Wagner. Charlie Wagner was the city manager at that time. He was the youngest city manager in the state of California. But he helped bring us through that crisis. And so I know that you've got a lot of good help with the budget and looking through it. But I think the crux to what that message is is that we actually did cut the city budget 50%. And one of the things that always stands out in my mind is that we had just raised the city council salaries from $32.50 to $32 to $64, double it actually, $64. I don't know what the city council is. I haven't seen a budget lately, but I don't know what the city council gets now. However, there was an article in the paper just about 10 days ago that disclosed some salaries in the city. And I think from the little bit of discussion that I've had around the community, I think that there is a perception out there that they need to be looked at. I mean, the entire budget needs to be looked at again. There may be some concern about these comments, but as I say, that precedent in '81, the fact that we walked in, we did, we cut the budget 50% and then we sat down and really massaged that until we got through it. But the, there is a need to be more cautious than maybe we are. It's possible that, I'm sure that there were a lot of comparisons made and I don't want to dwell on the salary portion of it, but I have to believe that when it happens in salaries, it's happening throughout the budget. It's not just confined to the salaries themselves. And that's why I really emphasize the notion of looking at the budget again more carefully before additional fees are added. I think the community deserves that. I think, as we all know, everything is becoming more expensive. The only thing that I've seen any stability to really, frankly, is bonds. And a lot of people complain about bonds, it's not very big, but they seem to have managed to maintain a pricing system there that just doesn't go out of the world, you know, out of sight. So I would certainly recommend that. I know that the salary issue and other things of that nature aren't going to be solved here. But one thing I do recall from my council experience is that typically, historically, cities have a tendency to compare their city with other so-called comparable cities. And there's not many cities that are comparable to Avalon. But what I do think is that maybe working a little bit out of the box, I think that Avalon's, the character of Avalon and the salaries that are paid in Avalon possibly need to be looked at and even compared with positions in the city. And look at that as a possible comparable. Either the city of Avalon or, and I think working with the chamber, that's doable. And/or looking at other comparable waterside communities up and down the California coast. But the notion of comparing it to other cities, I think is not the right thing to do.
Gina, would you mind coming up and sharing with Rudy and the community our forecasted deficit in these two funds and how the recommendation came forward to us as a result of strictly the fees? And while you're coming up, Rudy, I'm going to assure you we're having a budget study session tomorrow and we are doing exactly that. We're crossing the i's, dotting the t's and doing what we can to produce not only a balanced budget, but forecasting something that will give us some stability as well as adjusting some of the things that we've identified as big government or wasteful spending.
And Rudy, one of the things that outgrows the Prop 13 and the GAN limit was the enterprise funds. So that the sewer fund and the saltwater fund are enterprise funds. They can't make money. They can recover their costs. And even now, with these proposed fee increases, both those funds are going to be about $100,000 short and they're going to have to take it out of reserves. So I mean, I think we've done a pretty good job of scrubbing it and making sure that these increases are nominal but needed. And the cease and desist order is the thing that's really grinding down on us from the water board to play. I'm sorry, Gina.
Gina Schuark, Interim CFO. And what I'll repeat is what I mentioned before. We are currently finalizing those budgets and it has shifted. But I'll repeat what I said the last time and give you a little insight on the future. In regards to the sewer fund, this particular rate increase at 10% will generate an additional $132,000. Total net estimated revenue is $1.45 million. The reserves that we have for capital improvements in reserves are $277,000 in the sewer. The wastewater treatment plant replacement project has about $1.1 million. These are all estimates still. Operating reserves are $958,000. Saltwater is the one that has shifted. And revenue generated from this rate increase at 15% will be $51,000. Total estimated, new estimated revenue would be $392,000. Our operating reserves are at $490,000. And saltwater reserves are at $114,000. The shift is we're seeing higher expenditures as a result of our contractor coming in, higher expenditures in terms of repairing the saltwater valves. And I'll be, I can have that discussion with you tomorrow as well or in the future at our next meeting to go into more detail into that. So that's the estimate at this point. Saltwater's taking a little bit more of a hit.
Right, super. Thank you, Gina.
And as I say, with respect to the cease and desist order, there are requirements that the state of California has placed on Avalon to develop programs for resulting in their bay water. And we're estimating those programs, figure, right? There'll be $750,000 a year. One of the things that we have, we're not complying with the cease and desist order, is that one, we can define and two, where the state does not do, but they have the ability to do if we violate the cease and desist order, is to stop them. In other words, the state could come in and say, if you're not doing what we require you to do, no more homes, no more restaurants, no more businesses, period. And so we have escaped that so far. We've been able to negotiate with them. But that is a potential after for them to have a pressing with respect to cleaning up the water.
And the state is looking at us, trying to see what we're doing. And if we ignore showing that we're trying to raise more money to help the situation, that might go negative against us.
We have to file reports at least every year. Maybe more often than that, about where our progress is. Say, there's inspections here. So there's a lot of reporting, a lot of scrutiny we have right now. Things that are improving out there. But we're under a long term cease and desist order. There's years of programs that we have to do because in the state's view, the city has not devoted enough resources to its sewage system. And that's why the state is imposing a cease and desist.
And in reality, it's very difficult to go to a granting agency and ask for help when you haven't tried to look from within to try to raise the money to do the appropriate repairs and, you know. The ballpark estimate to fix the rest of the collection system is up there and it's an ongoing battle. I mean, we're still pouring saltwater down our infrastructure. Very corrosive thing. Okay, this is a public hearing item. Anyone else in the audience care to comment on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments?
I have a comment.
Yeah?
In regards to the cease and desist order, we definitely have to keep our eye on that. But Rudy, you brought up Charlie Wagner. This is the same proposal he brought to this council last year that we did not approve. So I think we really need to get this done.
Comment?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Yeah, no, we have to do this. Normally I vote no, but not on this one. Because we have to show the state that we are going in the right direction and we're increasing funds because we need them, because we're probably going to go to them and probably try to get grants to help us do the rest. So we're just showing that we're doing as much as we can do by making these increases.
Is that your motion, Ralph?
Yeah.
I think Rudy has one more thing to say.
Rudy? Rudy, next time sit in the front row.
Just one final question. What have we been doing? I've come to the council meetings, I've watched them on the telly at home. What have we been doing for the last 10 or 20 years? What is it, 15 years now since we received the first notice that there was some contamination in the harbor?
What I can tell you what we've done, I can only tell you what we've done the last four years. The last four years, the city spent about $5 million of redevelopment on this order. And we entered into those contracts to spend that $5 million before the cease and desist order. And what the state looked at is, okay, good Avalon. You're spending this money, you've entered the contracts. We will consider that when we look at the cease and desist. And they didn't find us and they didn't stop the drought. So we started improving these big infrastructure before the cease and desist and they still stopped cease and desist upon us if they said you haven't done it.
Well, what does that tell you? The city has spent a lot of money trying to solve a problem. Nobody's really watching the story though. I mean, what have they accomplished?
Well, at the end of the day...
Besides spending money.
Well, at the end of the day, Rudy, we have had some improved results. You know, our bay water postings are reduced. The biology reports that were given have improved. Are we 100% out of the trouble zone? No, because we have a lot more money to spend.
And we continue to find things. I mean, we found the manhole on the way out to the mole, that at high tide would come in and would leach stuff in the ocean. We found some sewers down by the Via Casino that were non-existent.
Well, like, for example, we videotaped and found that the collection system that goes down Casino Way was in good shape and in serviceable condition. The next time we videotaped it, we found some defects within that sewer line. So it's an ongoing management solution that we need to define, run and manage. That's frankly what's going on now. What has happened in the preceding 20 years? Not much had happened. And the reality is, is that, you know, we, at one stage of the game, we were blaming the seagulls and the pigeons as our problem despite what the scientific data was telling us. So we're actually making great strides in trying to solve our bay water quality issues. And we believe we're spending money wisely and prudently. Hence the comment on what the anticipated cost of a hospital sewer collection system is. So we're trying to be good stewards to the environment as well as stewards to the resources that our taxpayers are paying. And unfortunately, the funding streams from the variety of sources that we've had at our disposal in the past have dried up. So now we're trying to do it through rate increases and through prudent management.
And let me just, objectively speaking, what we've done is evident in the fact that if you go back two or three years from now, every week, the city was posted during the summer in every testing area. The last three months, not darnly, we've only been posted at once. And the rest of the city's clear. So what we hope to have that keeps up at the end of the year, including the summer, is that Avalon will be the, have made more progress than any other community in the United States in terms of cleaning up this water. If the current testing results continue. And that's something that objectively speaking, we can look at in terms of, not only have we, the city council allocated this money incentive, but we actually have objective results that are very pleasing to the state. They're very pleased with the dramatic improvement in the last three months.
We're so pleased that you have a cease and desist order.
Cease and desist order goes for years.
Thanks, Rudy.
Okay, we had a motion.
I'll second.
Call for a vote, please.
What are we voting for? All of that?
All ayes.
It's the adoption of the rest of the city council, the city of Avalon establishing a way to the saltwater service.
Roger.
Second, we have the consideration of placing of those rights being on the cash flows. The county department doesn't have to send bills there.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place those fees on...
Do we have to open, do we have to do the public hearing first?
So it's open, the public hearing? As a result of fees being associated with the tax rolls. Public hearing's open? Want to comment on that, Rudy? And I'm not picking on you. I appreciate somebody in the audience participating.
Yeah, Rudy Phillips, 346 Las Lomas. I think that's an issue that I think came up some time ago and was proposed. I don't think it was ever implemented, but I think one of the issues that was discussed that I recall was the fact that if there are any errors in any of the billings, the placement on the rules, that was because they're not right here in the city, that this is a county, I understand the county assessor's office will then apply those fees. That you probably are going to have to end up going over and protesting any kind of change that you feel that you just, you know, that's a just change. And so anyhow, the whole process isn't quite as simple as it is if the city bills. But I can understand the help it provides the city in terms of making it much more easy for their accounting department.
And also more economical.
And hopefully more economic.
Hey, Rudy, there's, I'll give you one indicator. When this first came up, Bud was the mayor. And what they did is they slip lined everything. Not everything, but they slip lined a lot of the infrastructure. And then when I came on, we assumed that everything that was slip lined was okay. So we concentrated on other areas. Then when Charlie, when I came back, Charlie had gone in there with the CATV camera and found that some of the slip line stuff wasn't done right. So that's another issue. And just recently, there was a sewer found right there, just a little bit, right, like, almost right in front of the Avalon grill that we didn't even know we had. That's probably when you were in there. You probably put that... You probably put that in. So, yeah. Anyway, a lot of things that went wrong. And we're fixing them one at a time. And it's going to take a little more time to get it done, too. The smoke testing, in fact, in fact, the city shut down the yacht club about a couple of days ago for leaking into the bay.
That was their own-
Yeah, but it was leaking in the bay which causes the high numbers when they test. So, yeah, there was a whole bunch of things that we did. We sort of shotgunned a little bit. We tried to get, heal the bay, to change their levels, you know, these levels are bad. And then we went to San Diego and Mission Bay was under the same, had the same problem that we did. And they went in and they did a $3 million study and came up with, came up with those levels that healed the base set were not bad. And so, yeah, but that never, they have more horsepower than we do.
Does the city still have a capital improvement person, engineer, or somebody on the staff similar to Keith the Fever? I mean, that is directly responsible for contractors coming in, doing work.
As it relates to the sewer, yes.
Dennis?
And he just walked out of the room a few minutes ago. But he's been very proactive in our sewer management plan and how we've been strategically attacking our problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rudy. Thank you, Rudy. Okay, anyone else care to comment on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Recommendations? Motions? Comments?
Recommendation is to adopt the reports, direct the city clerk to file said report with the Los Angeles County Auditor, and request the auditor to place the fiscal year 2013, 2014 property-related fees on the tax roll.
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
All ayes. City managers report.
I don't have anything.
Get it, girl.
Scott?
I don't know.
Denise, question for you. There's been a couple of people come up and ask about people slashing tires, breaking off mirrors. Have you heard anything to that effect, or has the sheriff department been aware of that?
I did. I got a call a couple of days ago regarding that, and I have not talked to Doug about it. When I saw him today, I forgot to, so.
Okay.
I've heard that, as well as cars that are being left open, people going through them and looking for cell phones and et cetera.
Yeah. It's been ongoing for weeks or so.
This is the time.
So I'm just wondering if anybody else, because they're slashing tires and breaking, they're getting, that's pretty-
Vandalism.
I just received the one call and I, you know, I was assuming it wasn't just hearsay.
Yeah. And I'm hearing it's not little kids either, teenagers. So, just that anybody's watching, just keep your eyes open.
Yeah, we have a WeTip number in Avalon, too, that you can report things anonymously. I just forgot what the number was, so.
911?
We do have a-
Yeah, there's a WeTip number. Well, the 911, they know who it is. But there's another number you can call and leave stuff on a recorder that they don't know who it is. An anonymous WeTip.
Good.
Anything else, Rich?
No.
Michael?
Just a couple of things. Are you going to bring parking at Lover's Coke to us?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just wanted to report back from my visit to Sacramento. I sit on the Community Services and the Tax and Rev Policy Committees with the League. Community Services was an excellent presentation from three gentlemen. One, a council member from West Sacramento, one a councilman from Sacramento, the other being a former councilman and now a nonprofit director in Richmond. And what they were focusing on was taking care of, not to, of getting kids before they became gang-related, getting involved in gangs. They wanted to get them before they started to join gangs. And they had some really great programs. I think the one I really liked the most was, in Sacramento, this one councilman got a project going using one teacher from Sacramento Unified School District, teaching 20 kids. And these 20 kids came and interned at City Hall. They were taken out of Oak Park, which is a really bad neighborhood in Sacramento, and brought downtown. And the program, they were each assigned to either a councilperson or a department head. And at the end of the, at the end of the summer, they got a $250 stipend. They're, starting the third year of this program, the second year of this program, they were able to bring in 40 kids and two teachers. Now this year, they're doing 60 kids with three teachers. But when the gentleman who had put the program together knew that it was working, is he had a security person at City Hall in Sacramento come up to him and say, "Councilman, I need to talk to you." And he went, "Oh, no, here it comes." He pulled him aside and he asked, "Are these your kids?" And he said, "Yes, this is my program." And he said, "I just wanted to commend you on how well behaved these kids are, how courteous they are to everybody who they talk to." They were just blown away. And now they're looking at trying to increase the program. And when they talked to the kids, they said, you know, "If we didn't offer the stipend, would you still come?" And they said, "Yes." They go, "When we first talk about it, it's the money at the end of the summer, but no, if you can get more kids involved and you can use that money to pay for teachers to do this class, then no, we would highly recommend you get rid of the stipend." But it's just, the discussion was, whenever they talk about public safety and cutting in public safety, the programs that usually go first are the ones that deal with kids. We will maintain funding for a police officer, a fireman, or whatever, but the ones you need to get are the one, you need to get the kids while they're still young and focus on them. And you need to teach them that they need to go back and be the spokesperson in their peer group to move it on. So it was just a very interesting subject that we were talking about. And then the, there is a one woman who's going to put a toolkit together that will go out to all the cities that will be able to do with the League website and get ideas to bring back to our communities. The big issue facing five of the community, the policy committees was immigration reform. The task force sent nine recommendations that they had gotten from the National League of Cities, and they were all unanimous, unanimously passed in support, so that the League now has nine points of immigration reform that they would like to see.
Thank you, Michael. Anything else?
Nope.
Bulley?
Once again, the Centennial Party, starting Thursday through next Wednesday, grand finale next Wednesday, week from Wednesday, burgers and dogs on the beach, Crescent Avenue between the pier and the plaza, fireworks and birthday cake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bulley. Ralph? I've got one, I've got one notice. It's very important. We had to cancel Ms. Pat's celebration of life that was supposed to happen on the 29th of this month. We're going to do it in August. We just had too many issues that we had to deal with. And so, we want to make this right. We want to do a big event, and it might be somewhere around selling raffle tickets and having a big fundraiser and divide the money up amongst all the charities in Avalon. And so we want, since we've been pressed, we have, we have a memorial mass and get together at Sacred Heart Convent in Montebello Saturday. And that's going to be basically for the family. We're going to take pictures and videos and all that, so that when we have the celebration of a life, we'll show everybody what went on there in Montebello. But there was just too many things going on. There were some issues with my son having to get an ablation operation and then having it canceled. And it just, we just wasted a lot of time. So it's been canceled as of now, and it will, it will end up happening in August sometime, probably right in the middle of August. And we'll keep everybody appraised of that. We're sorry that we had to cancel it, but we just, I want to do it right, because there's only one time we're going to do it. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned.